So we'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10:01. All those who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none, any additions to the agenda from the board?
I'm aware.
No? All right, moving out of the meeting minutes, if they're all right, we'll take a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from the meeting held April 8th.
I will second that.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on April 8th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, we will temporarily skip over our announcements for the Penn State Student Entrepreneur Presentation from Today Sports, and we'll move on to our proclamations. We have proclamation number 16 proclaiming April 13 through 19th as 911 Dispatchers Week in Center County, and we have Norm and Ramey and Mark, and so why don't you come on up and take the seats?
Yeah. Welcome. Good morning.
And thanks for the work you do, super important, and obviously it was a busy week in Center County.
Yes, it was.
Three weeks ago was an absolutely crazy off-the-charts kind of week with that storm with the small tornadoes, so we very much appreciate you coming, and I'll hand it over to Norm.
Good morning. We are celebrating National Telecommunicators Week or 911 Dispatcher Week this week at the 911 Center. We take this time this week to recognize our dispatch staff for the difficult job they do every day. They provide help to residents and visitors calling 911 often due to something horrible going wrong in their lives. 911 Dispatchers are first first responders who get help started for emergencies in Center County. They do many tasks from answering 911 phone calls, dispatching police, fire, and EMS, giving pre-arrival instructions for like CPR for callers, helping to deliver babies, answering non-emergency lines, and just helping residents navigate through difficult situations, paging agencies after hours, and way too many other tasks, helping peoples or agencies. 911 Dispatchers have been trained and ready to deal with these different emergencies. Initial dispatch training at Center County takes about six months to complete, including classroom training, months with a trainer one-on-one, requires multiple certifications, daily training, and quizzes, and continuous con ed classes, learning something new every day and applying it to knowledge, that knowledge forward each day. This all before they begin to work on their own, and then another six months working on their own, continuing to learn throughout the process. Sometimes callers have little or no information, other times a lot of information. The dispatcher has to work through these phone calls and get the appropriate help dispatch. They do amazing work every day and have to deal with storms, football weekends, special events, overnight activities downtown, and just college activities which can turn a normal day into chaos quickly. Center County is very fortunate to have a great group of dispatchers working here who take great pride in their jobs and work many long hours providing the needed service to the community.
Great, well, thank you very much, Norm, appreciate that. Ramey, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to follow Norm up with some of our statistics that our staff did last year. So last year, the dispatch staff worked a total of 9,220 hours of overtime.
Oh, that's just the overtime?
Yes, that's just overtime. Four of those dispatchers worked over 950 hours each of overtime, and one dispatcher had over 1,000 hours of overtime.
Thank you very much.
During the year, they answered 130,981 phone calls and handled 136,498 incidents. Two of our dispatchers received lifesaver pins for giving CPR instructions that saved a life, two other dispatchers assisted with delivery of babies, and we had one dispatcher that received the Center County Non-Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. So not only were they dispatching, they also spent numerous hours training themselves and new hires, and they've also been attending community outreach events to get the word out about 911, what we do and what they need to do when they call 911. So they've been busy.
Those are some tremendous statistics, Ramey. And Mark, wonderful name, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you for having me.
You're welcome. So as Norm and Ramey have discussed, it's an interesting job. It pays pretty well. You're paid while you're being trained. After you're trained, you get a nice pay bump, and amongst our dispatchers, last year we have two lives saved through remote CPR and two babies delivered. As a member, one of them was on the interstate. So tremendous job there, and you know, obviously it's a career. We tend to promote from within, and a lot of our supervisors and department and deputy department heads all came from within the team that started as telecommunicators. So I'll hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion for additional comments.
Yeah, thanks for being here, so we can recognize the work of your department. This is, you know, one of those county departments that runs 24/7 doing life-saving work, and the people who fill these roles, you know, have what clearly can be sometimes a very stressful job, but also very rewarding in terms of the impact they're able to make for residents and visitors to Center County as well. So, yeah, thank you very much. And are you currently hiring dispatchers at this time?
Yes, really.
Okay, so if anyone's interested in a career in dispatching, then you can go to the Center County website and look at the job listings and get in touch with us. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Concepcion and Commissioner Durshin.
Mark, tell us an adventurous story of your job. I'm sure there's something that stands out among all the things that you do on a yearly basis. We heard a few of them.
There's two highlights that come up to mind for me, as one was the active shooter incident they had at the Ramada a couple years ago.
Oh, yeah, that was awful.
I was working the night shift, and actually it was, as most of us do, we pay attention to stuff when we're not here, so I heard the call come out. I came in to help with that. That was one of them, and then I actually was fortunate enough to take the call for a delivery of a child, so I was here for that.
What was that like to me? You can't just let us hang with that.
It's fast, it's fast paced, you know? I don't do any work, I'm the unspoken hero, the mom does the work, you know?
Yeah, you're the coach, right?
Right, right, I mean, at that point, you're responsible for two patients, not just one.
Do you say something like breathe, remember to breathe?
Oh, yeah, we have guide cards that we follow to the T, because a lot of times you try to think on your feet, you know, and if you have those guide cards, they're there to help, which is tremendous.
So if anybody thinks that it's a boring...
It is definitely not boring.
Work-a-day job, it's something that probably offers a different challenge every day.
Absolutely.
That's the type of person we're looking for when we recruit, you know?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. Obviously, what you do is not only life-saving, but something that we take for granted on a routine basis, that somebody's going to always pick up on the other side, the other end of the phone when there's an emergency, but you're also the interface between the person in distress and the folks that can make things better. And that's got to be a tough challenge, whether you're delivering babies or you're dealing with folks in a very agitated state. I know a lot of you folks have gone through the CIT training and made that a big part of your crisis intervention training and make that a big part of what you do on de-escalation and dealing with folks that are in an excited or agitated state. I just want to say thank you for...
You're welcome.
We've, I don't think there's any of us that don't have a little experience making those three-digit phone calls, and you turn disasters into manageable events, and I think that's a laudable, a very laudable profession. But I will say, I didn't realize until I think John and I were talking about it, that you folks are not considered emergency responders.
Correct.
That needs to change. If there ever was folks that need to be recognized as first responders and emergency responders, you do, I think you deserve that recognition and the privileges and rights that that holds. So I think we need to make a concerted effort to contact our legislators to make sure that we give you folks that moniker, because I think it's important. You're the first, you literally are the first folks onboard when there's a crisis, and how you handle it can change the entire tetter of the event, so I think we need to be recognized for that. So I just want to say thank you for all you do and all the things you do for our community, the lives you save, the lives you change, and the comfort that you provide people who otherwise would have no other avenue for recourse, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Durshin. And so either Norm or Ramey, what is the starting hourly wage for the position?
Twenty-two, thirty-two an hour.
So you start at twenty-two, thirty-two an hour, and after what, roughly a year, once you pass your training, what does that bump up to?
It's still in the process yet.
It's still in the process, but a bump.
Another question, what are the skills, what are the skill sets that you're looking for out of a telecommunicator, but what qualities?
What do you think, Mark?
It's beneficial to have some type of a background in fire, law enforcement, EMS. Obviously, it's not required, but I think it assists with the training process, it makes it a lot smoother. You have an understanding already kind of into what is kind of happening with the process. Again, that's probably one of the biggest changes I've seen in the 25 years that I've been here, is we're not hiring people with passion anymore, we're hiring people that want jobs, so.
But the, like multitasking, there's got to be some other qualities.
Yeah, that's the testing process usually helps weed that out, because again, it is a, yeah, I always said before, if you can listen to the radio, watch television, and have a conversation with somebody, you can do the job. And then remember everything that happened.
That limits the field.
So, I mean, there's a lot of multitasking with the position, so.
And we appreciate that and the skill sets that that represents, so, well, thank you. I don't know what we'd do without you. I don't know what our whole county would do without you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to recognize your hard work, and I think it should, I know it's only a week here, but it really should be something year-round, and we appreciate your, and I know the hard work that you do, and again, the lives you change, so thank you.
And the lives you save, 130,000 calls last year, and we're just a medium-sized county. So you start at twenty-two, thirty-two an hour, after training you get a bump, you've got Blue Claw, Blue Claw, yeah, Blue Cross, Blue Shield Health Insurance, and fully-funded pension. Not a lot of jobs start out at that level, especially with just some sort of background or interest in emergency services and the ability to think on your feet. All right, unless there's anything else, I think we can adopt the proclamation.
I will move to adopt proclamation 16 of 2025 proclaiming April 13 through 19th, 2025 as 911 Dispatchers Week in Center County.
And I will second that.
We have a motion of second to adopt proclamation number 16 proclaiming April 13th through 19th as 911 Dispatchers Week in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Come on up and we'll do photos.
Twenty-five years, huh?
Yes, sir.
Fabulous.
Stories you must be able to tell.
Yes, lots of stories, I think.
I'm in the middle, okay.
Yeah.
Lots of stories.
No, why don't we put Mark in the middle?
That'll work.
Are we center, JJ, or we need to move around? Okay.
All right, make fun, everybody smile.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now I'll check with Lisa, is it okay if we have the Penn State Entrepreneurs before you? Okay, all right, so going slightly out of order, if Justin from Today Sports and his team will come on up, I think you need to work with technology a little bit, so.
Yes.
Do you want to see if you can get the video going from that laptop?
Yeah, we haven't minimized, but I don't know, you want to plug yours in?
Sure, let's plug mine in.
All right.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Have a seat.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not using Bluetooth for this, we actually use wires.
Okay, this is the only cord?
That's the only cord, right?
Okay, then it won't connect.
That's okay.
You don't have the HDMI, all right, so we will cross our fingers and see if we can get that going from the laptop then. Go here. Here, there's...
We don't have enough chairs.
For him, we'll load you chairs.
We honestly would prefer to stand. Yeah, yeah, we'll stand, we'll stand. We're an animated group, as you can tell already.
All right, so as Justin starts setting up the technology, I'll babble a little bit. Justin and his team from Today Sports, I think you officially started about three years ago.
Correct.
As a Penn State student project might be not official enough, because I think you've been working on this since you were in eighth grade.
That's right.
But Justin has had a passion for sports, for connecting young people with sports, and you have, I think the most shocking statistic is that you've recently passed a billion, and that's with a B, views on social media. You started in basketball, but I believe you have branched out to a broad variety of other sports now, and I think one of your members was actually able to play with the Harlem Globetrotters a short time ago. Oh, that was you, okay. Let's say that would be my most likely guess.
He signed with the Globetrotters for 24 hours when they came to San Diego.
Fabulous. Now, were you on the Globetrotters or the Generals?
I was on the Globetrotters. I wanted to be on the Generals.
All right.
I always hit the transfer portal because they wouldn't let me play more, so.
Okay, all right.
What were your stats?
Zero points. Oh, I had a free throw.
You had a free throw, all right. One point, all right. All right, you're in the stat books forever.
Yeah, my goal was to be like the best bench warmer they ever had, so.
Okay, all right. Very good, very good.
Well, Commissioner Higgins, thank you so much for having us.
Do you want Justin?
It's a pleasure to meet you all. Thank you for having us. My name is Justin Loosner, I'm the founder of Today Sports.
My name is Robert Prince III, I'm our head creative producer at Today Sports.
Kyle Hodgson, head of finance.
And I'm Austin Groft, I'm the lead content creator for Basketball Today.
And we create social media videos for Gen Z on YouTube, TikTok, Instagram, and Snapchat. We are based in State College, Pennsylvania, so we have our headquarters up in Innovation Park.
Yes.
Courtesy of Ben Franklin Technology Partners, and we operate out of the innovation hub downtown in the Happy Valley Launch Box. We are extremely grateful for Center County, the resources, Penn State University, Invent Penn State, Ben Franklin Technology Partners, without them, none of this would be possible. We put together a slide deck, and I'm hoping the audio works, just to give you guys some visuals of what exactly we do. To start, I'm sure you recognize you guys as Coach James Franklin. We made some content with him last summer, and so, yeah, we recently just crossed 1 billion views. Commissioner Mark, thank you for shouting that out for us. That is our total lifetime views across all of our platforms on YouTube, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, Twitter, and Facebook, and so we post multiple videos every single day, around two to three, and over the past three years, those have totaled up to 1 billion views on social media. But how did we even get here? And so this is me as a 10-year-old on the left. This is when I started my first YouTube channel called YF, known as You're Fired. And so the idea was, I wanted to grow up and be a YouTube creator. This was in 2013, so YouTube was still a little bit new to the mainstream, but I saved up money and bought a GoPro for, with some birthday money. My friend and I, we downloaded Final Cut Pro, saved up $300 for that from Christmas and birthday money, and we started creating YouTube videos about sports. So really, it was unfocused, it was just anything that I liked in sports, I'd make a video of, and so, and over the past 12 years, I've done just that. Now have, you know, we have a team of 10, and we create content, and we've done stuff with Jason Kelsey, as you saw, James Franklin, and most recently Saquon Barkley in the bottom left, who is the Philadelphia Eagles and Penn State football legend.
Yeah.
And so how did we get here to, you know, from me creating videos as a 10-year-old to us creating videos with some of the biggest legends in all of the state of Pennsylvania? Well, like I said, in 2013, I created my YouTube channel, and it works. I grew to 50,000 subscribers after posting daily content for seven years in elementary school, middle school, and high school. Every single day, I would come home from school, get off the school bus, and just make a YouTube video. That was my whole life. In 2020, I pivoted that, once COVID hit, to building a YouTube agency where I helped other businesses grow on YouTube, like Philly Pretzel Factory, Sean Clifford's company, Limitless NIL, he was the quarterback of Penn State football a few years ago, and some other big athletes and creators across the sports world. Then, once I came to Penn State in 2021, I signed up for the Happy Valley Launch Box pitch competitions. They are absolutely tremendous resource, there's one going down tomorrow night. Commissioner Higgins, will you be there?
Um, I will be in Vegas, so.
Wow, okay.
Visiting family.
Because you haven't missed, you haven't missed.
I haven't missed one in a while, yes.
Okay, well, there's one tomorrow night if anyone's interested. Commissioner Higgins knows they're a fun watch.
Very fun.
But that's actually where we met.
Yeah.
We met when we won $3,000 for our startup, when I was a sophomore here at Penn State. Austin and I were posting daily content along with our COO grant sheets on this channel called Basketball Today. We committed to each posting one video every single day for 100 days, and it worked. We grew to 100,000 subscribers in just a few months on TikTok, and then also 100,000 YouTube subscribers. This is the YouTube trophy that they sent you once you crossed 100,000 subscribers. We wanted to show you guys that today. And, yeah, so the Launch Box provided that. We also were a part of the Summer Founders Program, which provided $15,000 in funding. We won second place in the Ink U Pitch Competition, which provided $10,000 in funding. And then most recently, I graduated from Penn State in December. However, I chose to stick around. I never thought I would. I wanted to leave this place and go back to New Jersey and move out to Los Angeles as soon as possible, but because of Invent Penn State, because of Ben Franklin, because of the Launch Box, I'm choosing to stay. Austin also graduated a few years ago, he's sticking around to work on this company, as well as to do campus ministry downtown in State College, and then Rob and Kyle are wrapping up school in the next few years.
Wonderful.
Penn State also loves to feature us on their Instagram because they know that. People know us around campus and online, so that's us at the Whiteout game. We made a fun video where we were front, we camped out with Nittanyville, and we stayed to be the first people, front row at the Penn State Whiteout, and that video did well. Here's some members of our team downtown at the Happy Valley Launch Box with another one of our silver play buttons that we won recently. You might be wondering, who the heck is watching your videos? That's a great question. Let me find that slide for you. There we go. So we post videos on TikTok and YouTube Shorts, our videos average anywhere from 100,000 to 300,000 videos. Like I said, we post one to two videos every single day, so that adds up quickly. These are some of the brands we've been able to work with, so these brands pay us money to promote their products within our content. So some big names here, also some local names like Happy Valley United, but also some, you know, great companies like Gatorade, Lululemon, Disney Plus, Pittsburgh Pirates, et cetera. Some case studies for our brand partners, because this is how we make money, so we must do a good job providing our partners with value so that we can continue getting business. We were the number one ranked video for the ESPN on Disney Plus campaign that is currently running, so if you have Instagram, YouTube, TikTok, or Snapchat, you might see my face on there in the next few days. I get one to two texts every day from people saying, hey, I saw your ad on my feed. Austin over here does an incredible job with some of our brand partners on the organic side of things, so NBA 2K25, Austin's currently creating content for them. In just three videos, we've already generated over 2 million organic views for them, and that's advertising, that's branded content. So if you equate that to TV CPMs...
Oh, my goodness.
That's thousands and tens of thousands of dollars, but since it's social media, we're able to do it a lot easier than through traditional media. Smack and Sunflower Seeds, a newer brand that's taking over the market, they're launching in Target. I think this weekend, and we're going to be doing a fun road trip, we're going to be driving to the Target headquarters from State College to Minneapolis, Minnesota later this month, to celebrate the release of one of our partners. Smack and Seeds launching in Target nationwide, and perhaps our best case study yet, generating over 40 million organic views for Gatorade in 2024. We made great content at Beaver Stadium during the tailgates, as well as we hosted a few athlete crater days where we had athletes and craters from the Northeast drive to State College, you know, three, four, five hours from Syracuse, New Jersey, Philadelphia, Temple University, New York City, and we hosted crater days sponsored by Gatorade to make content. So we've also started facilitating events, which has been awesome. Like I said, none of this would have been possible without Center County, Penn State University, Invent Penn State, Ben Franklin Technology Partners, so thank you guys for the great work you're doing, supporting student entrepreneurs. We wouldn't have a job without you and the funding to help us get started, and now that we're profitable, we're able to make this our full-time jobs, and for me, this is a dream come true, and I know for these guys, it's also a dream come true.
Sounds like a fun job, too.
Very, yeah.
I did a lot of talking, I'm going to let them talk. Do you guys have any questions or want to know more about what we do?
Well, I will say it's been a lot of fun associating with you, Justin, and I really get charged by helping other people realize their dreams. And obviously, now we've got four people here in the room, and I think you've got roughly four more people you're affiliated with...
Absolutely.
...who are also realizing their dreams. And again, thanks to Ben Franklin, thanks to the Happy Valley Launch Box, thanks to the entire, both Penn State and Center County entrepreneurial ecosystem. We're not only helping you launch, but you're actually staying here now, which we really appreciate.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, could you tell us just a little bit more about like the focus of your videos? Are you primarily basketball, but you do some football, I guess? And are you focused in Pennsylvania, or is it more of a national focus?
Yeah, great question. So Austin is our lead creator, our basketball brand is our first brand, so that's what we, Austin and I started posting on, so that is our biggest, it has 500,000 followers, but we also do have a football brand, a baseball brand, and a hockey brand that are a little bit smaller. Since we are based in Pennsylvania, it's easy to drive to Philly or create content at Beaver Stadium, so, yeah, a lot of our videos that have done well are shot in Pennsylvania, but we've also traveled to Los Angeles, Florida for IMG Academy, New York City, we've been there, I think, three times in the past month for the Big Ten Champ, or the Big East Championship, as well as the Sweet 16 and the Elite Eight in North Jersey. And so, yeah, primarily in the Northeast, but, you know, if a brand wants to pay us to go to Minnesota or Los Angeles, we'll be there.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, it's really great to see that, like, all the support that you had from Penn State, from like the local scene in terms of like everything we've done locally to try to invest in entrepreneurship here, and get, that you've decided to stay here and keep this as your home base is really exactly the kind of thing that we hope to see, you know? Is, we're always hoping that students will decide to stay here after they graduate, and starting your own business is like even better, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so congratulations. I love seeing these stories, too, of like, you know, that you started this as a young kid, and that what your passion when you were 10, like, actually stuck, you know, and that you were building those skills throughout your teen years in high school and into college, and that they, you know, turn out to be, you know, really actually marketable skills.
Big shout-out to my career.
Not just playing on the computer, yeah, right. Yep, so, yeah, congratulations.
Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Durshin, I'm sure you're going to bring up the W word, aren't you?
Yes, I am, but I won't start with that. I'll leave with just saying the, it is an amazing thing that you've done here. It's amazing, no matter what age you are, but to have this goal and this vision all for you and your whole team, I mean, this is phenomenal. I mean, I just don't know how you can, how you can wrap your hat around a billion views of something. That's monumental, but now I have to go into, have you ever considered wrestling?
It's a good question.
I have, I have a lot of, a lot of faith in the fact that you could, you could do some amazing things, particularly with the Penn State connections between not only the collegiate wrestling, but the Olympic, the Nittany Line Wrestling Club, and all the Olympic training that goes on here and all over the state and all over the country. But if you ever need any guidance in that, I think I can, I can lead you to some folks that can help. But wrestling is a very growing sport, particularly now that women have joined the ranks, and it's, it's kind of a big deal around here, so, just, I know you're all basketball guys, like, yeah, but.
I know, Justin likes wrestling. I do like wrestling.
Well, there you go. Sometime I'd like to sit down with you and kind of, I could give you a little bit of the lay of the land and maybe some ideas of if you, if you wanted to dabble in that to see if it has... But this is huge, it's huge in this area, in the state of Pennsylvania. Just a few weeks ago, for instance, they had the Keystone State Championships with a bunch of young wrestlers, both male and female, and there were thousands of them that converged on the Bryce Jordan Center, so I just have to put that pitch in there, but it's really amazing what you're doing and what you're, what a dream. And, you know, we should, we should all be so lucky to have a passion that starts so early and continues, and something tells me you're hooked now.
Twelve years in, yeah, I think I'm doing this for a while.
Well, congratulations, it's fantastic, so thank you.
Commissioner Durshin is a huge wrestling fan.
Surrounded by a bunch of huge wrestling... Yeah, surrounded by a bunch of huge wrestling fans. So if you ever need any any information, I know exactly where to send you, so.
Did you used to wrestle?
No, actually, well, when I was little tiny, but it's just something that that I've really taken a shine to, and and Penn State's a great place to to admire that.
Only knew this when, baby.
Yeah. Well, we can we can get you hooked up with with that world if you're if you're so interested.
Just please.
Thank you. Yeah, I would I would be thrilled to do that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, wonderful job, Justin and team. Great pivot when the technology wasn't quite a hundred percent. Apologize, we're not quite as technology forward as your as your crew.
He did pretty well, I think.
Yeah, yeah. But again, very much appreciate your coming. I don't know if anybody else in the room has any questions? No? All right, wanted to check. So we wish you great fortune. You're doing super, super well already, and, you know, we'll, should we get a picture with him, JJ?
Let's do it. We'll put the slide up.
JJ's a Muay Thai fighter, so.
Oh, okay. Don't mess with him.
There you go.
Oh, we'll pivot over a little further.
Okay.
One billion.
One billion.
There you go. I'm wrestling.
Absolutely.
All right, well, let's rotate around this.
What a guy, what a bunch of guys, man.
Well, yeah, what if we do two and two?
Two and two, okay.
Yeah. That's all I know.
Or maybe maybe we get like a little point up edit?
Okay, oh, like that.
All right. All right. Yeah, maybe y'all can come in a little bit more.
A little closer. All right. We got it? Put your put your YouTube trophy up there so we can see it.
All right. Yeah, now we're talking. Thirty fun, thirty fun. Steve over here, Steve over here, if you don't mind. Let's go.
All right, to point to something and not look at it.
Yeah, that's true. Great job. I'll be going to national.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. If we can, I can put you up on the table. Amazing. That was much of the guys were, you know, national champions.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Let's rearrange everything here. A little bit of a extra show here for the folks in Portland today. And hopefully, something about this, especially the new Penn State Entrepreneurial Company staying in Center County, even though your average employee age is probably twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Hopefully, that will make some of the press reports. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you could come in.
Thank you. Thanks to today's sports for coming and telling us a bit about what they do, and also literally staying here in the county. All right, now we'll we'll move from something that's very today to something that's been around for a very, 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 very long time.
But still just as relevant.
Which is still relevant and still very popular and also unique, the Great Grange Fair.
And Grange General.
We have Lisa Butler here for the proclamation for April as Grange Month in Center County.
Good morning. Like you said, I'm Lisa Butler. I'm the president of Center County Promona Grange Number Thirteen. A hundred and fifty-one years ago, Leonard Roan saw a need for the Grange in the county and started, helped and established several Granges around the area, several which are still active today. Currently, there are twelve active Granges in Center County, ranging from all the way out in Bayleville to Howard and everywhere in between. Granges were started as an agricultural and rural community grassroots organization that are very, that are still very active in promoting agriculture and providing community services to their area. The wonderful thing about Grange that I always bring up is it is so diverse, no matter which Grange you belong to. Everyone has a different impact. What I might need at my home Grange in Bayleville is going to be different than what they might need in Howard or Pen Valley. Some of the different activities that are done around the community county are hero bags for local EMS, fire, and police stations, food distribution, collections for other organizations, a rabies clinic, scholarships, and many, many more. At the county level, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Center County Grange Encampment and Fair. The Fair Committee is made up of representatives from all the twelve local Granges. Promona also provides scholarships to local seniors and makes donations to other organizations, including providing FFA jackets to first-year ag students. At the state and national levels, Granges have been working with government officials on multiple areas, mostly rural internet, providing services to the outlying areas, and mental health care. I encourage everyone to look out, to reach out to their local Grange and see what it's all about, and thank you to the commissioners for your support over the years and recognizing us for the month of April.
Great, thank you. Did you have more?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, great. Thank you very much, Lisa. For people from maybe outside of Pennsylvania where the Grange is still very popular, obviously founded a little over a hundred and fifty years ago as kind of a lobbying organization and union for farmers, started out with rural free delivery, which actually wasn't free, there just wasn't a surcharge. Then it moved on to rural electrification, and now, as you mentioned, major focuses on rural broadband and mental health services. Farming is a very difficult and risky occupation, and the farmers and their families need our support, obviously, at things like agland preservation, which the county is very active in, farmers' markets, and farm policy, because the last time I looked, I think a box of cornflakes was somewhere around five bucks. And also, last time I checked, farmers get between fourteen and sixteen cents for the corn that's actually inside the box. So the farmers, definitely tough business, and the commissioners are very happy to support them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks for coming in to highlight the work of the Grange. I think, you know, you're doing really crucial work in terms of promoting policies that favor agriculture, and that, you know, as a sector, is really something that, like, benefits all of us. Everyone needs to eat. So, like, we should all care about having policy that helps farmers be able to make a living and keep doing what they're doing. It's really crucial to food security in our country and and here locally in Center County as well. I think we're really so fortunate in Center County that we have such a great local food ecosystem, that you can pretty much feed yourself from the local food system that's here. And I think anytime we can remind people to to seek out those local farms for buying their food from, it's, you know, a good opportunity to do that. But, you know, Grange certainly supports many different components of agriculture, including helping youth think of it as something that they could go into as a career as well, which is pretty important for sustaining agriculture here. So thank you for being here.
Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz.
Well, thank you for coming in, Lisa. I think we're very familiar with the the good work of the Grange, and I think most people in Center County think of the Grange as the Grange Fair, and that's obviously the marquee of of what your organization does. But there are so many other, like, the sub, the sub, what the Promona Granges that are across the whole county that do so many good work. And really, it's, I don't even know how you put a put a measure on on the the great things that have happened through the Grange programs throughout the throughout the county. But I think what what fascinates me most is that when Leonard Roan came up with this idea of a Grange in Center County, it was just a few people getting together and, you know, having a picnic periodically, and it's grown into this behemoth giant machine that that we all look forward to, and it becomes ultimately the probably the biggest family reunion in the state before it's all said and done. And, you know, the the tens of thousands of people that that come into Center County to to enjoy what we have here, and it's just, it's it's just pretty phenomenal. And to see that kind of growth and that kind of impact, and the Grange has been involved in so many different, I mean, I think of the the horse barns out there and what that brings into the community and the number of dollars that, you want to talk about economic development, that's that's a that's a huge thing.
It's multimillion now. The state just released a report at the beginning of the year.
And that's, and now it's one of the largest horse venues in the whole Eastern Seaboard. So, you know, we're very proud to to be excited with you and all the good things that you do. But the Grange is just so intertwined into our communities that we're very excited to honor it and continue to honor it and look forward to the Grange Fair again in August this year. So thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Lisa. Appreciate your coming. Wanted to stress the economic, as Commissioner Dershowitz mentioned, the economic impact of agriculture in Center County, well over a hundred million dollars just in commodity crops, and I think at this point, it's tens of millions of dollars in ag tourism, because in addition to the horses at Grange Fair, there's the llamas, the alpacas, the goats, all sorts of different show animals at that facility now.
Yes.
Great. So unless there's anything else, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move then to adopt Proclamation Seventeen of two thousand twenty-five proclaiming April two thousand twenty-five as Grange Month in Center County.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number seventeen proclaiming April as Grange Month in Center County. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Come on up, and we'll do the proclamation.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Fantastic. We love the Grange.
Why don't you stand right in front of Center Hall?
There you go.
Uh, just a touch.
Tiny bit?
Okay, there we go.
So, would you push that chair out of the way?
Oh, yes. In the frame, huh?
Yeah, we don't need it.
Thank you. Thirty bucks. Oh, this is good. That chair.
I wasn't pointing, I wasn't pointing at anything with it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in.
Lisa, thanks.
Thanks.
Yep, look forward to talking to you very soon.
All right, now we'll move on to somewhat less exciting things, although I know this is important to Jonathan.
Yes.
Bids and proposals. We have the Center County Sheriff's Office Parking Lot Upgrade Request for Proposal. I believe we received four requests by the deadline, and this is, I think, to put the final top coat at the lot of the sheriff's office.
Correct. This is to add some concrete curbing, do the top coat, add an ADA spot, as well as upgrade the sidewalks to allow accessibility into the sheriff's office. So we did receive four proposals by the deadline. Three of the four were complete, which were Bowman Excavating, Paying, Paving, and Concrete, Big Rock Paving, and Land Serve Inc. So this morning, I am asking for your approval to enter into contract negotiations with those three contractors.
Great. Well, thanks, Jonathan. I believe, didn't Bowman do the lot here at the Willow Bank?
That's correct. Bowman Excavating, Paving, and Concrete completed the work here at the Willow Bank Building.
Good, well, they did a nice job, and it's definitely great for the citizens and the employees to have a nice evenly paved parking lot, fully handicapped, accessible, without a whole bunch of potholes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
Yeah, no, it's a good project to be moving forward with after we had that sort of sinkhole like situation there that was remedied, but this'll, you know, be a more permanent solution, I understand.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
No, I'm good to go. Glad that we can help the sheriff's office.
Yeah, good point, Amber, for reminding us that this started as an emergency situation with, I believe it was a hole so deep it was like eighteen-foot pole couldn't quite hit the bottom of it?
Yes, it was approximately eighteen feet.
Yes, that was wild. That was wild. Well, glad nobody was hurt. Unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion.
That was the dungeon, wasn't it?
Maybe, maybe.
Just had to remind everybody, it wasn't just a sinkhole.
Right.
It was a dungeon hole.
They found a shackle bar.
Oh, goodness.
There you go.
It's not a naturally occurring sinkhole.
Okay, anyways. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I will move that we enter into contract review for the Center County Sheriff's Parking Lot Upgrades.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to enter the contract review for the Center County Sheriff's Parking Lot Upgrades. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And then will you have two more things for us?
Correct. So the next item is asking for your consideration and approval of a change order with S.J. Thomas Company for installing a lightning protection system on the roof of the correctional facility. This is part of the roof replacement project that was started in the fall. It was determined that the current lightning protection system has corroded and is beyond being reattached, so the cabling and all of the protectors need replaced. So that total is fifty thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
All right, well, thanks for discovering that, Jonathan, and doing the work to get it fixed. Obviously, a facility that size, hundreds of people in it, we we need to have lightning protection.
Yes, without it, it could cause catastrophic issues to the electrical and data system that's in that building.
Yeah, you don't want to short the whole thing out because it's not grounded properly.
Yeah, no, that's pretty crucial.
Anything else you want to add, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Dershowitz?
All right.
I will move to approve the change order with S.J. Thomas Company, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order with S.J. Thomas Company, Inc. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And then we've got a contract for the Public Safety Training Center.
Yes. So with the many projects we've been doing at the Public Safety Training Center, we have noticed that the Stone Roadway that is around the Burn Building has settled quite a bit from when it was originally in place. So this morning, I am asking for your consideration and approval to purchase three hundred and eighty tons of two A stone, which is approximately twenty triaxle loads. That would be from Glenno Hall Baker's Corey, who will deliver the stone to the site, and then the CPI students in the Heavy Equipment Operations Center will do the final grading and spreading of that stone. So that cost is five thousand eight hundred ninety dollars for the purchase of the stone.
Wow, that seems like a pretty good deal for.
That's considerable savings.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order with S.J. Thomas Company, Inc. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And then we've got a contract for the Public Safety Training Center.
Yes. So with the many projects we've been doing at the Public Safety Training Center, we have noticed that the stone roadway that is around the Burn Building has settled quite a bit from when it was originally in place. So this morning, I am asking for your consideration and approval to purchase 380 tons of 2A stone, which is approximately 20 triaxle loads. That would be from Gleno Hall Baker's Corey, who will deliver the stone to the site. And then the CPI students in the Heavy Equipment Operations Center will do the final grading and spreading of that stone. So that cost is $5,890 for the purchase of the stone.
Wow. That seems like a pretty good deal for that much stone.
That's considerable savings.
Yes, that's a, a very good price for that much stone.
Yeah. And I believe that area also services the drafting pit, which is where the fire companies test their pumps in case they ever need to pump water out of a pond or lake or stream as well.
That is correct. That area, it is around the Burn Building, the drafting pit, as well as the fire training for vehicle fires, propane fires, and also vehicle extrication is in that area as well. So, many important items that are around this.
Yeah, I believe the technical term for those is props.
Yes.
Kind of like in theater. So we do have a lot of props up there, which, as you mentioned, emergency responders respond to all sorts of different situations. And they, they need a nice level surface to be working from as they, as they train.
Correct.
Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
Seems a good, good deal.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Ready to go.
All right.
I'll move to add the contract with Central Pennsylvania Institute to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Central Pennsylvania Institute to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. And then I believe Julia has a whole bunch of human services items for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first is for children and youth services. I'm asking you to consider approval of the Act 148 Second Quarter Report. Children Youth Services is on track with their spending. They ended the second quarter at 42% spent. The next is a contract renewal with Outside In School of Experimental Education Incorporated to provide residential services for dependent and delinquent youth. This is actually for juvenile probation youth in this placement. The county match for that is $22,000. The third is for a contract renewal with Avanco International Incorporated to provide child accounting profile systems, otherwise known as CAPS, service provider agreement. This is for the data management software system in Children Youth Services that they are required to have. And the county share of that contract is $8,102.74. And then additionally, there is a consulting services addendum with Avanco International to provide CAPS service provider agreement. And that is the county share being $6,000.
Great, thanks, Julia. Any questions about the Commissioner and those items?
Just, so, what are the two different Avanco contracts? So one is for the actual data management system, and one is for consult, is that consulting?
Yes. So the one is for the data management system. And then the second is, so what will happen throughout the year, the state will change regulatory requirements, they'll change a form, they'll change something with their system, which is CYS, Child Welfare Information System. And so then those things will require Avanco to then make adjustments and then send out those changes.
Okay.
Good question. Good question. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Oh, good to go.
All right. Then I will move to add the CYS items, one through four, to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the four children and youth services items to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now you've got two more items for adult services.
Sure. So the first is a, asking your approval for the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report for 2325. So the state and the county had to have a back and forth discussion regarding what the true allocation was. So they finally reached a consensus. And so we were able to turn in our income and expense report for fiscal year 2324.
Great. Any questions on that item?
I'll move to approve the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report for fiscal year 2324.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report for state fiscal 2324. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And then you've got a contract addendum.
I do, with Housing Transitions for Emergency Solutions Grant, Emergency Shelter Services. This is what Faith had talked about last week. And so the contract totals for $94,649.59. And that is completely federal funded.
Great. And we'd like to thank our state and federal legislatures for all the funding that we use to provide almost $130 million of services to Center County citizens. Any questions?
I will move to add the contract with housing transitions to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with housing transitions to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And I believe you have one more item for aging.
I do. So this is to increase the, the rates that our Office of Aging receives for doing the, the age, with Aging Well, to doing the functional eligibility determinations and participate in the hearings where the functional eligibility determinations are appealed. So this is for Medicaid eligibility for nursing home stays and approval into community health choices in the waiver system. This is, these increases will benefit our Office of Aging, increase the rate for when they're doing these assessments.
Great, thanks for explaining that, Julia. Obviously, very important work. If somebody does really need to be in a nursing home, then need to fill out the paperwork and approve it. And good to see we're getting a little bit extra funding on that.
Yes.
Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershowitz?
Good, thank you.
I will move to add the contract with Aging Well PA LLC to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Aging Well PA LLC to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
We have a pretty big consent agenda, but I think we rolled it last week. Bless you, John. No questions, we'll take a motion.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the check run, Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, the check that I'd like to recognize today on the check run as to housing transitions, as we mentioned before. You know, they're one of our crucial partners in terms of homelessness prevention, emergency housing, and short-term housing for people who need, who need something, you know, on an emergency basis. So with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated April 11, 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated April 11. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Do we have an administrator's report, John?
Not at this time, however. Next week, I will be reporting the administrator's activity for quarter one.
All right, great. Moving on to reports and announcements. I would like to ask Commissioner Concepcion as the voters registration.
So this week on our report, we have a total of 101,617 total voters registered in Center County. That's down three from last week. Of those, 41,255 are registered Democratic, 160 Green Party, 558 Libertarian, 15,552 with no affiliation, and 42,065 Republican registered voters. All of the other smaller parties comprise 2,027 registered voters. Our precinct of the week that we're going to recognize this week is Precinct 2. That's Bellefonte Northeast. There are 830 registered voters in this precinct. And at the last election in November, they had a total voter turnout of 87.11%.
I hear that's a really good precinct.
I do.
I brought that on. What makes you think that?
Yeah, great turnout.
Yeah, it is a good turnout.
Yeah, and it's at the top of the hill, so it doesn't flood very much.
There you go.
Yeah.
Nice neighborhood, I hear.
Is it? Yeah. So that precinct votes at St. John Lutheran Church at 216 North McAllister Street, right here in Bellefonte. And we'd like to thank St. John's for the use of their church for, for our elections.
A really amazing election staff at that one.
Yes.
I can attest to it.
Oh, yeah.
Some experience there.
I do. Thank you.
Spent a fair bit of time out there in the parking lot, pressing the flash.
There you go.
Yeah. All right, moving on to announcements. Center County Government Offices will be closed on Friday, April 18, in observance of spring break. Did want to mention that we have the public hearing tonight for the Department of Corrections for the potential closing of SCI Rockview and the Quahana Boot Camp. It's at the Bald Eagle Area School District, essentially high school and middle school complex over in Wingate. And I suspect it might go on for a couple hours. So if you get there early, great. But if you can't, I bet you if you're running late, you'll probably find some spots and there'll still be a line of people waiting to speak. I don't know if the other commissioners want to add anything to that.
What time does it start again?
Five o'clock officially.
Five o'clock official.
Might want to arrive a little early.
Yeah.
Right. But again, if you're running late, it's okay.
Right.
I'm sure it's going to take a while.
Yep.
Based on what the hearing up in Carthas, it should take a while.
Yeah. And that hearing in Carthas had tremendous turnout, really.
Oh, yes.
So I would expect this even, you know, possibly even greater turnout at this event.
Correct. But that's 892 jobs in Clinton Center and Clearfield Counties, biggest closing since the Corning Asahi Plant about 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Any executive sessions to reporter hold, John?
No executive sessions to reporter hold.
All right. For our public meeting schedule, we have the Employee Benefit Trust at 1:00 today. On Thursday, we have the Combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meeting at 10:00. And then a Board of Elections meeting at 3:00. Unless CNET has any questions, I don't think we got any questions from the press today then. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, we take a motion to adjourn at 10:58.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 10:58. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.